Page one, Bill eighty-nine dash twenty-one. Colonel Davis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. And yes, auto thefts are a significant problem, but we're managing it. The department's Regional Auto Theft Task Force Initiative on Auto Theft Investigations and Auto Theft Reductions Through Analysis Program is a successful, well-planned and executed program to combat these theft trends and successful, these theft trends and suspected occurrences of organized vehicle theft and related crimes. The program is centered around developing, analyzing, and sharing crime data that drives comprehensive regional enforcement and crime prevention strategies. The department estimated that it would receive $400,000 in funding for Auto Theft Prevention Program in FY22 budget request to the council. The council, in fact, approved that budget. The grant award actually received was $410,000, and we are required to come back to council to seek the additional supplemental appropriation of $10,000 for this program. So that's, that will be what we're asking for, and these funds will be used to, to as build out costs such as emergency light kits for grant-funded vehicles and ballistic bunkers to aid us in our, in our, in our job. So that's that first one.
So, a ballistic bumper? That, that I remember when they used to have these buddy bumpers to help push you out of the way. A ballistic bumper is a battering ram?
No, no, sir. It's a, it's a shield. When the entry person enters a building for a search warrant, it's, it's bulletproof. It will stop certain, certain bullets. It has a light on it, and it's for extra protection as we're conducting search warrants.
Okay, okay, I got you. So let me ask you a question. Are, are people, are people stealing cars now? I mean, do they have the electronic keys? Do they have the rear recoil to disable the alarm? What, what is, what is the prevalent way that people are stealing cars nowadays when most keys have some type of chip or some type of electronic effect?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. So the newer cars have key fobs. What we, what we preach to everyone, and we've, we've done campaigns and we push it out to communities, not to leave your extra keys and the key fobs. So that's, in, in the car. So a lot of people tend to leave that extra key fob in their car, and people are rummaging through the cars and retrieving these. And, and another way is cat burglaries. When we have cat burglaries, people will break into your house. Sometimes when the person is home and asleep, and they'll, they'll get the car keys. Another way would be carjackings, as you know, carjackings arise where they're, they're taking these new cars, and then a good portion of the auto thefts are, are the vehicles that does not have these, this technology yet. So they are older style vehicles that they can steal using the older traditional methods.
Are there any questions to comment? Because, you know, as I was saying earlier, a lot of these crimes, especially right now, the hottest thing going with these snatch and brand ATM. And I suspect that first thing they do is steal a car to go and commit their crime. That, that what happens, most cases, these cars are being stolen to be a part of another crime? Or do you find most of them being stolen for joyriding or?
Many of them are, many of them are stolen to commit other crimes. And it's unfortunate, but that's, you know, years ago, the joyriding was in style. Now it's, it's not. So that, that's usually what they're used for.
Additional questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Davis, has there been an uptick in in hijacking cars?
Carjackings, yes, sir. There has been an uptick in, in carjackings. But I always, I always put the positive on the negative as well. The positive is that we have a higher clearance rate than, than most agencies and in nationwide. So Baltimore County does a good job clearing, clearing these cases when they happen.
I can't imagine how frightening it must be to be in your car and have it hijacked. I guess what, they pull you out and, and take possession of the car?
They do. Many times they'll, they'll use fear. They'll possess a weapon. They'll pull you out, search your pockets. Usually take your phone and your keys, and sometimes there is physical force and violence that's, that's attached and associated with that.
I'm certain that the police department has developed various strategies to combat this problem. I assume that's true.
Well, yes, sir. We, we, we use crime analysis and a lot of data to, to try to predict where, where these are going to happen. And of course, it's unpredictable in many cases, but you know, many groups have patterns. We deploy our resources appropriately to those particular areas, be it marked resources or even unmarked. And we use a lot of technology to, to solve the crimes, and you would be amazed at, at the technology that's out there now. It's, it's tough to commit a crime and actually get away with it now with, with camera systems and infotainment and phones and things like that to help us.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions or comments? All right, Colonel, let's move along to page four, Bill ninety-dash twenty-one.
Okay, and that would be the Internet Crimes Against Children. The Baltimore County Police Department is participating, is a participating member of Maryland's Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. The department has detectives from, from its Crimes Against Children Unit assigned to the task force who collaborate and share information with other members of the task force to combat a variety of crimes against children within the community that begins with internet contact. So the police department Crimes Against Children Pornography and Sexual Exploitation Squad consists of four detectives and one supervisor. So we are requesting the acceptance of the, the acceptance of supplemental appropriation funds in the amount of $30,340. The, it was, the initial request was for $45,340, but our department has funded $15,000 of this already. And so this $30,340 will be used for overtime for detectives to, to incurred while in the process of connecting, investigating child pornography and exploitation investigations. $5,340 will be used for computer and digital storage, which is, which is very important to these, the investigation of these crimes. And so this grant fund will enable our personnel to conduct proactive child exploitation investigations and target child sexual predators.
Any questions or comments on the note? Thank you, Colonel. I guess we'll move on to page seven, Bill ninety-one dash twenty-one.
Yes, sir. And this last one is the Maryland Criminal Investigation Intelligence Network Grant. This, this grant is a core, a coalition of criminal justice agencies focused on identifying, disrupting, and dismantling criminal networks through collaboration and data sharing, both locally and statewide. FY22 funding incorporates the Heroin Coordinator Program into the Emsen Framework. The council approved funding in FY21 and granted approval of $234,608 in FY22 funding. The department was fortunate enough to receive additional funding above the amount previously requested and which, which I just discussed. The Emsen Grant funds, funds the following equipment. Software for our Real-Time Event Center, which we're currently building out. Training for Real-Time Event Center staff. Hardware for Real-Time Event Center and intelligence, and our intelligence section. So now, now we're requesting approval of the additional $324,549 in funds allocated as part of the Emsen Grant for the following positions. The Heroin Grant Coordinator. We're requesting an Assistant State's Attorney, Prosecutor. Overtime funds for analysts and detectives. And sequel development services for the Real-Time Event Center. The department made a compelling case to the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention regarding the value of a, the Baltimore County Real-Time Event Center. And as a result, the grant award was larger than we anticipated. So we, we ask you to approve the additional three hundred. That, that would be our case.
Any questions or comments on the members? I think we're always happy to accept money from the state. Thank you, Colonel Davis. And next we'll move on to page ten, Miss DeAndrea Walker, Bill ninety-two dash twenty-one.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is bringing forth Bill ninety-two dash twenty-one and asking for approval, which authorizes the use of vehicle height monitoring systems here in the county. It allows us to enforce state and local laws restricting the presence of large commercial vehicles in certain areas or during certain times. This bill was based on recommendations made by the Residential Truck Traffic Work Group, which I chaired. The work group was established in response to the Maryland General Assembly's passage of Senate Bill forty-one during the 2020 legislative session. The state legislative, the state legislation allows Baltimore County to implement this program to address the high volumes of large truck traffic on our local roadways. Following the issuance of the recommendations of the work group, which is what we're doing here today. The work group indicated, included again several local communities as well as the truck and industry organizations, as well as several county departments, DPW and T, Budget, the police, and a few other departments. So a vehicle height monitoring system is a device with one or more motor vehicle sensors that is capable of producing recorded images of vehicles whose height exceeds a predetermined limit, which was, the limit was decided by the work group. And the same definition is found in the state law. The administration is advising that Baltimore City, we follow Baltimore City's layout of their program and their camera program, and it has proven to be effective. We took some things from Baltimore City's layout of their program, and then we implemented our own as well to improve our vehicle height monitoring system. So this bill authorizes the county to cite an owner of a vehicle that is censored by the vehicle height monitoring system, and certain vehicle categories will be exempt from citations, including school buses, our public transit vehicles, our utility vehicles, and our emergency vehicles. Those vehicles that are cited by the system are going to be subject to civil penalty, and that is set forth in state law. We are limited to operate no more than seven cameras at a time, based on the state legislation. At this time, we don't have a fiscal impact or a timeline for installing the vehicle height monitoring system right now because we need to do regulations and things of that sort. And then, once the legislation is approved, we will then be allowed to implement the regular, implement the regulations as well as start the procurement for the necessary equipment. So that is a little bit about what Bill ninety... Let me go back up to the, Bill ninety-two dash twenty-one is. I'll take any questions.
Yeah, so I guess the question for me is, we don't know what this will cost?
Not just yet, sir, and I'll tell you why. Because we have not, until we can implement regulations and procure, we can't implement regulations and start to set up the program until those regulations have been approved and heard by the community. And then I can procure the actual equipment. So until I procure the equipment, you don't know how much the program is going to actually cost. Because each equipment, you know, depending on the number of cameras that we may have, determines how much staff we may have and the capabilities of the equipment. So I'm not able to give a cost at this time.
Will we ever have an opportunity to come back and say, we don't want to spend $10 million to give 50 people a ticket?
Yes, sir. We will have to come back to you a couple of times after the regulations have been approved, as well as when the procurement comes across for the actual equipment for the service.
All right. Are any questions or comments on the number? Yes, Councilman Quirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I did want to thank Ms. Walker and for a great job working with this group. I know Councilman Crandall's on the phone as well. Councilman Crandall and I have had tremendous, tremendous issues in parts of our district, specifically with this issue. Like, for example, Benson Avenue. For years and years, this has been a huge problem with big trucks, you know, flying down a street that has a lot of residential homes. And, and so I do appreciate the work of this, this group. I know my legislative aide, Brian Morris, has been working closely with the community. And so I greatly appreciate the efforts here, and this is, this has been a long time coming. So I'm glad to see these efforts underway and really appreciate Ms. Walker's personal help and attention, along with this, the, the group, the, the Traffic Work Group that has been wrestling with this major issue affecting real-life people in the county. So it's just great to see some, some action here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Quirk. Are there any questions, comments, Councilman Crandall?
Sure, Mr. Chair, it's Todd Crandall.
You're right, Councilman Quirk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Director Walker and the, and the administration for their attention to this issue. It's been an issue ongoing in our district for some time. Councilman Quirk and I have had numerous conversations about similar issues in his district. And it's been sort of a little bit of a saga to get to the point where we can have the enabling legislation that the county executive lobbied for to lobby the General Assembly to enable us to, to start this, this monitoring system. And it, and it's, it really goes to a couple of different things. One of them is that our community, especially in the seventh district, we are very used to being neighbors to industry. We have the Port of Baltimore. We have a major logistics hub being built at Trade Point Atlantic. And we're seeing an increase in truck traffic. So the fact that the administration and Director Walker has convened this group, of which my staff, I have to give my staff member, Ron Metzger, some kudos for, for taking part in this group and taking part in the meetings to, to come up with this legislation. It's it's, it's a response to years of complaints that we've received in our office that we've passed along. And it's, it's finally being addressed, and there's another issue we'll deal with later on in the session that, that I'm also pleased is finally being addressed. But Director Walker, I do, I do have a question with one provision in the bill. You and I have discussed it very briefly, but so we, we're prohibited by the state legislation for seven cameras only. Now, is that seven, seven, seven vehicle height monitoring cameras throughout Baltimore County or within one district? Or how does that, how does that work? Because I'm, I'm looking at it from an enforcement standpoint, which has always been an issue for the police department is, okay, how do we enforce a tractor trailer that's making a local delivery as to one that is illegally on a route that they're not supposed to be on? So I just wanted to raise that question with you.
So, sir, we, the work group did a couple of things in terms of research, looking at where our complaints come from primarily right now, especially in the seventh and the first district. And we've made some recommendations, but I will say we are open to a recommendation from council to offer more cameras within the county if that is necessary. One street that I think that you may be more concerned about than a little bit is Wise Avenue. And we did recommend that we have more than one camera at that location in particular. And I also have Mr. Joe Baller on the call with me as well. He was more familiar with the state legislation. I did the task force. So Joel, do you have something that you want to add? Because I do think that we're able to add additional cameras based on state legislation.
Yes, so I did just want to clarify that the state legislation says that before program Kimble implemented, we need to have a limit on the number of cameras in the county. And the work group convened, and we sort of pushed and pulled and came to seven total cameras as a a consensus point, because this was, a lot of this was trying to balance the needs of constituents with not, you know, overburdening or overpushing things on to the industry. So that seven is, came from a two-to-one ratio that the city used, right? Of, there were fourteen total places in the worker recommendations that cameras could go. And so the, the city's current operation is, is a twelve and six. We, we sort of agreed to do a fourteen and seven as, to mirror that and brought that forth in our legislation, so it represented what the work group wanted out of this. But I do want to also note that the Wise Avenue location is different than the others in our recommendations. Because most of the locations, or I should say all of the other locations, which there were six others total, had only one camera per direction, which for those smaller residential streets was able to capture, you know, vehicles going down. But with Wise Avenue, there is so much, for lack of a better term, legitimate truck traffic on those streets. And it is not illegal to, you know, make a local delivery. It is not illegal to, you know, go do a pickup of some kind. If it's on that street, it's only to go from end to end to use it as a way to bypass the more proper routes. So the two-camera solution on Wise was recognizing that you really, you really can't accurately capture folks with one camera in each direction the way you could with the other locations. So essentially, we wouldn't necessarily need both directions running at one time, but four of those seven cameras would need to be dedicated to Wise Avenue to have it be fully cammered up, you know, and we could, you know, but there's always the option to only have a camera in a certain direction. So I hope that clarifies that.
No, I, I think, I appreciate the information. Again, it, it's always been an issue, as we've been dealing with this for several years, is just the enforcement issue of, you know, is, is, is the truck going to make a local delivery, or are they just using it as a through route from Halliburton Avenue to North Point Boulevard and not stopping along the way, say, at Gray's Road? And I know that the, the, the work group and Director Walker are more than familiar with the, the, the roads that I'm talking about. And it always seemed, and sort of important to me, that whatever system was put in place, that the system would timestamp a truck, so you know that a truck is either passing all the way through, or they're stopping to make a, a local delivery at one of the industrial sites along Wise Avenue. So I appreciate the process that, that's gone into this and certainly appreciate the attention that, as Councilman Quirk said, the attention that's been in paid to the matter. And I think this is evolving as you, as you've, you've, you and Director Walker both said, I think it's evolving. But it certainly portends to, portends to, to, to progress in, in, in helping our constituents with this issue. So thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. If I could, Councilman Quirk, then you, Councilman Quirk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one follow-up on that, as I think Pete and, Pete, Chris Goomis and Brian Morris had Magnolia added to that list, is that right? Is that one of the, one of the roads we're also looking at for one of these cameras?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For Councilman Quirk?
Yeah, Joel, maybe I've missed it, but if a truck, if a camera catches a truck, but it so happens that the truck is legally on that particular road, what, what happens?
So this piece of it, it wasn't included in the legislation because it's more of an administrative function. But there is currently in the county a play, a way to contest a speeding ticket without going to court. We have an ombudsman, and essentially what the work group is saying is to mimic that process that we use for speed cameras to say, if you have any paperwork, a bill of lading or otherwise, something proving that you have a legitimate reason to be there, then as soon as you get your citation, there'll be a website on there, and you just upload a picture of that bill of lading, and then that ombudsman handles it so that none of this has to go to district court.
Okay. It, it needs to be as simple as possible. Okay, thank you.
We have made a recommendation that we can appeal, and we can look at those tickets in advance before it goes out to make sure that we don't erroneously send out tickets to folks that, that should not be receiving the ticket. So we did have an extensive conversation about that part as well.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, Councilman Quirk. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Walker. You always do a wonderful job. We appreciate it, and all the other folks who work hard on that that task force for vehicle monitoring, tractor trailers. We'll move right on to
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have two registered speakers for this item.
Oh, that's right. Who speak?
Yes.
All right.
I'll call upon our first speaker. Just to remind everybody, testimony, your testimony will be three minutes. Mr. Merson? John Merson?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Let me try your other one. Hold on just a moment because we have a bit of an echo. Are you there, Mr. Merson?
Yes, I am.
Okay, are you one with two devices?
No.
Okay. Because your name is on here twice, and there's a really bad echo. I'm gonna try. Hopefully I won't lose you totally. I'm gonna have to log one of these off. Give me one second.
Okay.
Are you there, sir?
I'm still here.
Yep, we lost the echo. Somehow you were on the meeting twice, and it was causing an echo. You may begin your testimony. My apologies.
Yes, okay. Well, first of all, my name is John Merson. I'm living on Benson Avenue, right next to 695 Overpass. And truck traffic's been a problem for over forty years. Signs have been on Benson Avenue the whole time. Trucks have been used the road instead of Joe Avenue to Caton, for whatever reason. Uh, trucks have been used the road instead of Joe Avenue to Caton, for whatever reason. And, uh, we've been up on the 695 to Caton Avenue legally. It takes one minute longer to go that way to UPS, let's say, than it is to come through the residential neighborhood. Our residential neighborhood is all residential. It's only three blocks long. You can see from one end of the road to the other. And, uh, well, just before the meeting, I sat here and looked out the window and I saw six trucks in five minutes. And that was, uh, 3:30 or so, 3:40. So, uh, my house has got cracks in the foundation. My neighbor's houses have got cracks in the foundation. The road is shifting to the right and breaking up and, uh, starting to tilt. There's a water meter that's in their street that the tractor trailers hit religiously the lid of it. And it, uh, causes it to leak and it freezes up in ice and causes accidents in the winter. All because of truck traffic mostly. Other than that, I really appreciate, uh, everybody, uh, Ms. Walker and everybody helping me out here. Um, other than that, it's all about all I got to say and I'll take any questions.
Well, sir, I, I thank you so much for, uh, testifying today. We certainly appreciate it. It's always better when we hear from the, the citizens that we're here to serve. And clearly, uh, this is a major problem you've been dealing with and hopefully this will fix.
Hope so.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
We have one more speaker for this item, Mr. Chair, and that would be, uh, Ms. Lisa Redeman. Ms. Redeman?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, Chairman Jones and the county council for having me this evening. I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I've been living, I live on Wise Avenue. I'm right next to the country club and I've been here for 21 years. Although my husband's grandparents, uh, built their house here and lived here for 60 some years. Since March of 2020, I have been in a remote work from home process since COVID. And there's a window right next to me and I have stayed here. Wednesday, November. I'm sorry?
Oh, right here.
Oh, so, um, I literally can sit here and I, in one day, in an eight hour period, could tick mark how many tractor trailers go up and down Wise Avenue from the Baltimore port. I'm talking containers. Um, literally some will be so heavy that they hit a, a bump and they shake the entire house. You know, my, my whole concern is the infrastructure of the street where we have no sidewalks, we have no drainage. You know, I'm afraid it's gonna, you know, bust our piping. Um, I've seen tractor trailers, uh, higher than normal, hit cable wires and knock them down. Um, I've seen them blow their horn and be mad because someone made a, wanted to make a left turn and they're just going fast enough. Um, I mean, it's just, it's, it's been very upsetting to see. And I, and I laughed at my husband when he kept telling me about all the truck. I, you don't know what you're talking about until I actually been sitting here for 18 months, listening to the truck traffic. I mean, it's just, it, it's, uh, there, there's no sidewalks for kids. You, people are walking down the street and you got these trailers going down. I understand if they're going to Wise, a grocery store to do a local delivery, absolutely. Right, and then you go to the end of the country club, you got Gray's Road. They're doing a cut through straight down Wise Avenue from the port, just to, to make, I guess, to, to get there faster. And then I didn't tick mark when they're coming back from Gray's Road or North Point Boulevard. I mean, I even see Amazon tractor trailers coming down our road. It's, it's just, I mean, it's a residential area. I mean, I'm not, maybe I'm not maybe in an area like Hartford County where you don't see. And, you know, but this is one lane traffic and it's just, I mean, it's, it's time for somebody to do something about it. I mean, you, you'll have the truckers, you know, give you looks when you kind of look at them coming down the road. And, you know, some are barreling so fast down the road and then some are creeping because they know they're not supposed to be on the road. When 15 years ago, I'm, 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 when Sonny and Johnny Oshuski Senior, we sat in meetings with them and they put, um, signs up telling them no truck traffic. Because they, you know, rebottled the whole Wise Avenue bridge. I don't know, two, 10 millions dollars it cost them. The bridge was closed for, you know, 10 months. But it's just, it's getting, it's getting bad. I mean, I, I, I appreciate that someone took the concern, you know, to start with some truck cameras and, and, and ticketing them. I mean, they need it. I mean, but I do appreciate everything that everybody's doing to pass this bill. I mean, I, I urge you to approve the bill for the monitoring. Thank you for your time.
Well, I, uh, thank you for your testimony and without a doubt, you and the other caller certainly has put a human, uh, face and has explained to everyone the actual cost in terms of quality of life and property, uh, to the individuals in their, their homes, as well as to the county roads, uh, that is being caused by these trucks, which is, uh, a very serious problem. Any questions or comments from the members? We'll move on. Again, thank you for your, uh, testimony. And while we have you, uh, Ms. Walker, why don't we, uh, just jump a little bit so that, uh, while we move to fiscal matter, number, uh, fiscal matter number two, page 26. Ms. Walker, you want to take here that one?
Yes, sir. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with DIW Group. Um, to, it's a specialized engineering to provide materials testing services on an as needed basis. The contract will commence, uh, on September 17th, 2021. I want to say we have not used the contract. We were waiting, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, the contract will commence on September 17th, 2021 through March 16th, 2022. And may not exceed $25,000 unless approved by council.
Okay, specialized engineering testing service. Any questions or comments on the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. We'll move on to page 14, Mr. Lawrence Richardson, Bill 93-21.
Uh, good afternoon, good afternoon, Chairman Jones, members of the council. The administration is seeking a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $131,014 to our substance abuse block grant, one-time COVID-19 supplemental funding for prevention services. The majority of these funds will be used to implement five new strategies for, uh, data analysis and assessment to help guide approaches to address youth substance use and misuse of prescription opioid drugs. Uh, the remaining funding will be used as educational opportunities for health providers and prescription, uh, prescribers. The, uh, the department will be utilizing strategies linked to core substance abuse block grant outreach goals, including youth substance abuse assessments, social media campaigns concerning cannabis use, active parenting, safe drug storage education and prescription drug use education. Uh, the remaining funds will also be used to provide training for 35 to 50 OB-GYN providers regarding opioids and pregnant women.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And that's a quick reminder that, you know, so easy to get lost in COVID. Uh, these other things are still happening now in the community that still needs to attend. Any questions or comments on the members? I understand we have one speaker.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, uh, David, David Bishai. I hope I'm pronouncing that, Mr. Bishai?
Yes, hi, um, this is David Bishai. Um, I'm, uh, calling to speak in favor of Bill 93-21. I, I speak as a professor of public health at Johns Hopkins and as a former health officer. I was recently the health officer of Hartford County, but I've been living in Baltimore County for 25 years in District Three. Um, when funds like this come from the federal government, you know, any great health department has to say yes. And I'm so glad that we live in a county with one of the very best health departments anywhere, bar none. And we're so thankful for the leadership of, uh, uh, Mr. Richardson and, uh, our, our health officer, uh, Dr. Branch. As, as we all know, we are, we are so, um, blessed to have such leadership at this time. So I, I do want to say that when a gifted health department, uh, like ours, um, accepts, uh, money like this, we can expect great things to happen. But I want to call council's attention, uh, to what our health department could do, um, with more unrestricted funds. Funds like this come from the feds and from, you know, lots of money comes from the state, but it comes, um, directed by these higher levels of government to, to put strings attached to it. Now, this is not going to be much of an obstacle, but if you multiply this by dozens and dozens, our health department gets tied down and I want you to envision Gulliver tied down by hundreds of Lilliputian strings. You can't move this way, you can't move that way, you have to do what we say. This is the type of pressure that a great health department has. Um, I want to call council's attention, so we do want to say yes to this money, but we want to recognize that the core budget that this Baltimore County Health Department uses to really push the envelope on better life expectancy and better health for this county, those core funds, um, have been kept level. And this year, in a very cynical move, um, the state, um, Department of Budget substituted flexible money by COVID money. They've taken about 20% of Baltimore County's health budget that could have been free and open for the health department to do with as they like. Now that has to be glued to COVID activities. So it's essentially a 20% reduction. I don't know if the county has a money tree that can fix it. It really is a very cynical move by the state officials to substitute federal money during a time of, of, of fiscal, uh, opportunity for this state. And it, I, I'd like the council to realize that this magnificent health department is being shackled by a loss of their core opportunities. Now, it's a great health department, it's going to come through for us and they're going to do wonderful things wi- with these substance abuse funds. But they could do so much more if, if we protected their core budgets. And I say this because it's a great health department with great leadership. And, and again, we just don't hear enough how this health department has carried us through this pandemic and how they can carry us through the next decade of progress for the county. Um, I want to thank the, the council for supporting the health department throughout all this time. And I want to applaud the work of, of, of this terrific health department.
Uh, Mr. Bishai, uh, Dr. Shai, I, uh, thank you so much for taking the time to testify. From everything I can tell, you are truly a dedicated professional. And I'm gonna just take a moment to say I think this Hartford County is awesome. Uh, any additional questions or comments from the members? Okay, thank you very much, Doc. Next, we will move on to, let's see where we go now. Mr. Richardson, you still here? 94-21.
I'm still here. So the administration is seeking another supplemental appropriation in federal funds in an amount of $43,500 to our mental health services federal block grant. Uh, the program will be to establish a pilot program to provide smartphones and tablets to 50 behavioral health clients in order to facilitate telehealth video conferencing services with community providers. The two providers were chosen by a competitive RFP process. Bright Futures Ahead and Center for Creative Values will purchase smartphones and tablets to provide behavioral health clients with internet access for telehealth video conferencing. The smartphones and tablets will be made HIPAA compliant and will be loaned to clients via signed agreements contingent on continued enrollment with the providers. Uh, the providers will be determined, uh, based on program eligibility, based on need. Each provider is expected to serve 25 clients during this grant period. So a total of 50 clients in, in two-year period.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Richardson. 50 clients is 50 clients and we want to help everyone we can, especially in terms of mental illness. Any questions or comments on the members? Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
We will move on to, uh, why don't we jump around and go to page 33, go to fiscal matter with, uh, Rob O'Connor.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the council. Administration is requesting approval of a contract with Mission Critical Partners LLC to provide consulting services and technical expertise for the county's public safety radio communication system. Contract will commence on council approval, continues for one year and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with the option to extend for an additional term of any renewal term. And, I'm sorry, additional 120 days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the first initial year. Total compensation may not exceed $2,672,000 for the entire five-year, four-month term. Mission Critical Partners LLC was acquired by Black and Veatch Corporation Public Safety Consulting Division in January of 2020. The purpose of this contract is to allow Mission Critical Partners LLC to further provide technical expertise and complete the system implementation and upgrade of single cell implementation for the county's public safety radio system. These systems are critical to the police fire and 911, as well as the lives of citizens of Baltimore County. The system design, configuration and equipment is regularly reviewed and updated as soft, new software and hardware releases and solutions become available from the manufacturer, which is Motorola. This inclu- is includes, but is not limited FCC radio spectrum support, detailed system assessments, planning, design, project management, vendor negotiations and system lifecycle effectiveness. This solicitation was based upon a, uh, in county's best interest as the vendor is currently in mid-flight of our large single cell MP25 upgrade of our public safety radio system. And to replace that vendor at this point in time would impact the project duration, cost and possibly the outcome.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any questions or comments on the memo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, right here.
Uh, Mr. Connor, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you, Mr. Blaze. Are these, uh, capital dollars that are being used for this project, for this, um, contract?
They're combinations of, uh, they were, uh, public safety capital funds are what is, was the referendum. I'll let Ed delve into that, but that is what is being utilized for the single cell and P25 upgrade.
I guess the, the, if bond funds are being used, um, I'm just curious if the debt will outlast the useful lives, useful life of the equipment?
The useful life of the equipment is seven to 10 years for our microwave network.
So that, I guess that's the nature of my question. If the debt, if, let's say it's a 20-year bond, then are we still paying debt on something that's obsolete or that we've, um?
Yes, it, that may, may very well be the, the case, but frequently we're looking at all the assets across the entire capital program as we're looking at the life expectancy, um, like we do with other things. So IT, you know, it turns over so quickly. Um, but when you look at buildings, they are far, they far exceed the 20-year lifecycle of, of referendum. So we're looking at an average of the total program, the total debt issuance. And IT is just a small piece of it.
I guess I, it gives me a little bit of heartburn to, you know, sometimes I, I T, and I do understand, Mr. Blaze, that I T moves very quickly and, and it's very difficult for it to outlast the debt service. But I, I am a little concerned about the use of capital funds on something that may not, you know, it's not typical bricks and mortar, sticks and bricks, however, however it's defined. Then I'll just, uh, you know, put up a caution flag. But thanks.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on the memo? Eric Nun, thank you very much, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Blaze, appreciate it. And now we'll move on to, uh, fiscal matter. Uh, let's go to page 21, Ms. Jeff Schender.
Good evening, Councilman Chair and members of the council. I have, um, joining with me Matt Carpenter and Seth Bloom, uh, for any technical questions that may be asked for this contract. that may be asked for this contract. The county is requesting the approval of the Amendment Number Three Agreement MA-2045 for N-L-X of North America, Inc., for Energy Consulting Services. A next, there was, N-L-X, North America, Inc., and Baltimore Region Cooperative Purchasing Committee entered into agreement dated November seventh of two thousand and eleven. Baltimore County Government is one of the participating entities in the large group comprised of the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchase Agreement in order to enter into a cooperative agreement with the contractor for consulting services related to the purchase of electricity, natural gas, and other energies. The leading entry, BRCPC, is responsible for the procurement of the new contract and has encountered some unforeseen delays in procurement process that has resulted in the delay of a new contract before the expiration of the existing contract. Just very similar, and just making a side note, as we have here in Baltimore County experienced due to COVID for putting things out to procurement because of COVID, they too have experienced the same thing. This amendment extends the current expiration date of November sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, to avoid a lapse in service. The contractor shall be paid the combined total sum of fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month for the electric consulting and four thousand four hundred and thirty dollars for, per month for the natural gas consulting. Extend, during the extended term period of November seventh of two thousand and twenty-one until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Ms. Schendo, are there any questions or comments on the members? Were you, you have a question, Councilman Mark?
No, I'm not. I did not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schendo. We'll move on now to page twenty-nine. Mr. Troy Williams.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Council Chair and Council members. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Mason-Tillman Associates Limited to provide technical assistance to implement the recommendations of the March two thousand and twenty-one Conference of Disparity Study of the county's procurement practices to examine the utilization of certified minority-owned and women-owned business enterprises in county contracts. Within the contract, Mason-Tillman will specifically provide the preparation of the MBE-WBE Program Manual. They will also revise the county's procurement manual and county code to incorporate MBE-related procurement requirements. And third, they will provide ongoing staff consultation and presentations to the public and the county council as requested. The contract would commence upon the county's issuance of a notice to proceed following council approval and extend for a period of twenty months. The compensation of the contract will not exceed a hundred thousand dollars, and the county can terminate the contract providing written notice. Mr. Chairman, just for background, on November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the council approved a one-year and one-month contract with Mason-Tillman to conduct the disparity study in the amount of about roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they provided that disparity study in March of two thousand and twenty-one. There were some minimal delays due to staffing shortages and some of the COVID issues that we encountered. The office requested that the county designate the proposed contract as a non-competitive nine-oh-two-F award secured in the best interest of the county, advising that because Mason-Tillman Associates conducted the disparity study, their knowledge and expertise is necessary to perform the services associated with the post activity. And then finally, the county's procurement affidavit requires potential contractors to indicate whether or not they are in good standing with the state of Maryland. As of November third, Mason-Tillman Associates was not in good standing with the state, but it was due to administrative oversight within that organization. And as of this afternoon, they have submitted all required documentation to be placed back into good standing. So the contract was not initiated until we have confirmed that they are.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the members? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Move right along to Ms. Laura Raleigh, page thirty-seven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. The administration is requesting an amendment to the contract with Legal Aid Bureau Incorporated to continue to provide legal services to Baltimore County residents age sixty and older in accordance with the terms of the Older Americans Act as amended. The proposed amendment increases our maximum compensation to them for the final year of their term from fifty-two thousand to seventy-three thousand dollars, increasing the current maximum compensation for the entire five-year term, including the renewals from two hundred and sixty to two hundred and eighty-one thousand. This amendment is necessary to comply with our federal requirement that a minimum of five percent of our federal Title III-B funding be allocated for legal assistance. And because we received additional funding in that program, Legal Aid then also receives additional funding.
Any questions, comments on the members? There are none, Ms. Raleigh, if you can. We'll move along to page forty-one.
Yes, thank you.
Care of Love.
The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Trinity Care of Love LLC Two to provide assisted living services for eligible county residents age sixty-two and older, meeting income and eligibility requirements. Their contract will commence November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, continue through June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, with annual automatic additional one-year renewal period. This is, again, another assisted living to provide our consumers with options of choice if they participate in our assisted living state-funded subsidy program.
Thank you, Ms. Raleigh. Are there any questions or comments? There are none. We'll move right along to page forty-five. Megan Benjamin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of council. The administration is requesting approval for this contract, which is for the purchase of a perpetual conservation easement through the County Rural Legacy Program on the Galette property, which is a twenty-three-acre farm in the Piney Run Rural Legacy area. The purchase price is a hundred thirty thousand seven hundred nine dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on the members? There are none. Thank you very much, Ms. Benjamin. We'll move on to page forty-eight, Ms. Rosalyn Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Chair. Further, Rosalyn Johnson, Director of Recreation and Parks. Good evening also to council members. This request is to purchase four properties. Council chair, would you like to take them separately or altogether?
Well, why don't you, I guess separately is always good.
Okay, awesome. So we'll start with the Woodley Avenue property, and that is a property that's about three twenty acres, the purchase price is a five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we are requesting approval to acquire this property for Baltimore County residents.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, already.
Councilman Petoka here. I want to thank the administration and Ms. Johnson on this contract of sale. This is more open space in the second district, and it's sorely needed. This is in the Reissertstown area of the second district. This was, I can't tell you how excited I am and how excited the community is going to be about this contract of sale and the open space it creates. This was hard fought by the Reissertstown Owings Mills Glendon Association, the Reissertstown Improvement Association, the Chartley Homeowners Association, and I want to give a special shout-out to Pat Gordon, who has, she's, I think, a member of all of those organizations, but really led the charge on this. And this is a real victory for the community. And just, again, want to thank the administration and urge my colleagues to support this contract of sale.
What were they fighting, Councilman?
Well, there's a, there is a ten-foot pathway that leads to, it leads to an area that was initially proposed for squeezing in thirteen homes into this site. And so the community was opposed to that and supported open space rather than squeezing this development into this, through this ten-foot pathway. And so that's what they were fighting, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Ms. Johnson, I guess you can move on to the next one.
Thank you. We've been super busy, so this next property is three twenty-three Worthington Road. This is in Council District Five. It's about point four acres in the Towson area. The purchase price for this is about six hundred and thirty, well, it's exactly six hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And this is another piece of the puzzle along the Six Bridges Trail. And so this will aid us in the trailhead for the Six Bridges Trail.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much for that good news. As you mentioned, this helped acquire two properties along the Overbrook area of the proposed Six Bridge Trail. In addition to yourself, I really would like to thank Stacy Rogers. Ms. Rogers and I corresponded quite a bit over the past few months about this, and very happy with where we are with the Six Bridge Trail. And I feel like, should I be leaving Council as its councilman, this project will really be off to a good start. So I want to thank the administration for all its help.
Thank you, Councilman Marks.
Pleasure.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, Ms. Johnson, moving on to page fifty-four.
Absolutely. The next property is the fifty-seven forty-five Edmonton Avenue property, and this is in Council District One. It's about six point seven acres in the Catonsville community. The sale price for this property is five hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and this will add to much-needed parts, part property in the Catonsville area.
Any questions or comments on the members? Yes, Councilman Park.
Just appreciate the, the work and effort of yourself and the administration. So thank you very much for that.
Mr. Shannon, I have one more thing.
Wait a minute. Yeah, sure.
Okay. I also think it needs to be mentioned, the amount of open space that's been acquired around the county. This is not just in one area. It really is touching various regions of the county. It's an equitable approach to funding these projects, and I think the administration deserves a lot of credit on that.
I would agree. Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Rosalyn, if you can take us to page fifty-seven and the last item for you today.
Sure. The last item just rounds out the business that's been happening within our department, within the county, as it relates to acquisitions. This is for thirteen oh-one Chevrolet Road, this is in Council District Three. It's twelve point seven acres in the Towson Lock Raven area, and the purchase price for this property is one million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This property will be slated to be our future headquarters for Recreation and Parks, but it's nicely positioned in an actual park like Stanning, and this will allow all of our staff, all of our administrative staff to be together in one location while also affording park amenities to the community. I spoke with the president of the HOA Association a little bit earlier today, and he's very thankful to the county and really welcomed us as neighbors once he understood what was proposed for this particular site.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Councilman, yeah?
Yeah, Director Johnson, I appreciate your call to Cal today. There was quite a bit of question as to what the plans were for that piece of property. I understand that this Friday, there may be a meeting with the community, and I don't know if you know anything about it, but I think your staff is handling it, and I appreciate efforts to get together. You know, this county purchase really gives the community a lot of relief because what was proposed for that property was not necessarily well-accepted by the community. So I appreciate the county's efforts, and I'm sure that the headquarters is going to be beautiful. And so I, I thank you very much. And I, I mean, it certainly will continue to make the third district the best district in Baltimore County, the most beautiful. I mean, there's no question about that. I mean, we hear from District Two about, what, a measly half of an acre or something? And here we're talking about a beautiful site. So, you know, I'm sorry, Councilman Petoka, but what can I say?
Councilman Katz, don't forget you're the biggest, the largest.
Yeah, I know. And seriously, as Councilman Mark said, this administration has been very aggressive with obtaining open space for our county, and I, I appreciate it. And, you know, if I can do anything for Councilman Petoka to improve his district, I'll certainly do what I can, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilman Katz.
Oh, you're.
Every little bit of open space helps us continue to be a beautiful Baltimore County.
Third district, I agree.
Okay, okay, okay. Ms. Rosalyn Johnson, we certainly appreciate your vision. You've been doing a fantastic job as Reckon Park Director. You've been moving forward with a number of projects that my constituents talk about, and I like your vision and, and where are we going in terms of, you know, increasing the Reckon and Parks and all the other recreation and everything else to the constituents? You know, the kids love the school, what is it, boo, boo in the park? Boo?
The Boo Trail, Mr. Chair.
Boo, yes, okay. Any questions or comments from any of the members?
Thank you very much for your time, Wes. I think he was working very hard over here in support of the administration and their vision.
Good. I'm glad to, I'm sure the headquarters will be one. Next, we'll move on to Mr. David Likens, page sixty. Rick the Likens?
Good evening, Chairman Jones and members of the council. The administration requests the council's approval of Resolution one thirty-four dash twenty-one. Resolution one thirty-four dash twenty-one authorizes Baltimore County to partner with Valant Biosciences to evaluate aerial application of bacteriums WDG for suppression of midges in Back River. Bacteriums WDG is actually a naturally occurring bacteria, also goes by BTI. Governor Larry Hogan had signed an executive order back in August of two thousand and seventeen to begin a pilot project for midges and midge control in Back River. And that pilot study from two thousand and seventeen included five treatments between September of two thousand and seventeen and July of two thousand and eighteen. And that first study used a barge to distribute BTI, which took a significant amount of time. So a Bell two oh-six helicopter can treat that same area much quicker. So we would like to evaluate, we want to do a proof of concept. So we would like to evaluate and document the effectiveness of mid suppression using a helicopter. So we have helicopter applicators located in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, that has agreed to participate in this evaluation, and they're going to donate their helicopter time. And Valant Biosciences is going to donate the BTI to treat about a fifty-acre test site. So Baltimore County Daps will conduct pre-treatment and post-treatment sampling of midge larvae down the sediments in Back River in both the treated areas and untreated areas. And the helicopter applicators are going to work out of the Essex Sky Park, and they're going to bring all their own support stuff. And they're going to bring all their own support stuff, uh, for both fuel and water truck for the spray mixture. So this is a, uh, free program. Everything's donated and for mid suppression in Back River.
Well, I thank you, Director Lichten. I don't think those midges stand a chance. Are there any, bringing in air support? Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment, please.
All righty, here, Councilman Crandall.
Uh, well, 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 first of all, uh, Councilman Catch is always, um, uh, promoting his district as the most beautiful district in Baltimore County. And I'm not saying it's not.
And the largest, and the largest in land面积.
And, well, i- i- but i- i- if, if Councilman Catch would like to get swimming lessons, um, or if he doesn't know how to swim, uh, I know that Councilwoman Bevins and I have plenty of contacts to be able to get him a life preserver. And we can show him how beautiful the Baltimore County waterfront is. So Councilman Catch, you're certainly invited to, uh, uh, to come down and enjoy that. Um, but one of the, the, the impediments that, um, especially the Back River watershed has felt over, uh, really over the last ten, ten or twelve years is an infestation of the midge fly. And, um, I could probably, uh, make an hour-long speech on how we got to the point where, uh, uh, local government and state government are working together to, uh, provide some relief to our constituents of, uh, of this issue. The, the midge fly is a non-biting insect that swarms. Uh, people often confuse them with mosquitoes. However, they don't bite, but they are a major use nuisance. And, uh, until you've experienced walking out on a pier or living on the water or near the water, um, um, you can't really appreciate the complete nuisance that these insects provide for our, our constituents. Um, there are people that cannot leave their homes. When the infestations and the swarms swarm around their homes, um, you literally need a beekeeper's nest, a beekeeper's, uh, helmet to, to walk out of your home in some of these neighborhoods. And, uh, years and years ago, it was, it was sort of isolated to certain sections of the Essex part of Middle River. But they have, um, uh, proliferated, uh, throughout the Back River watershed. And now are moving to, um, other estuaries of the Chesapeake Bay, other watersheds, uh, the gunpowder for, for instance, uh, Middle River, for instance. And they're having a significant impact on, um, uh, on, on our economic drivers in those areas where marinas are losing business. Um, restaurants are losing business because no one can sit outside and enjoy a dinner or sit on their boat in a marina. Um, simply because, um, these things fly in your ears, they fly in your mouth, they fly up your nose. They, they, uh, if you, you, if you have a can of soda, they're flying in their can of soda, uh, in your can of soda. Um, it's, uh, it's, uh, yeah, I, I, I can't, um, um, uh, exaggerate enough what a nuisance these things have, have become. Now, they are a natural part of our ecosystem. They've been in existence probably long before hu- human beings have ever occupied, uh, the planet. Um, however, uh, certain factors have led to, uh, an infestation along Back River, and it's spread to such an extent that we've received, I don't know how many complaints throughout the years. Um, Baltimore County, to their credit, under the direction of Director Lichten and, and, and the county executive, established a, 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 a web app where people could report, uh, uh, an infestation or a swarm around their neighborhood, around their house. And there has been, um, Director Lichten, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been, in, in the past, uh, year, year and a half or so since the application has been launched, thousands of reports of midge infestations. Um, so we're not, um, you know, not exaggerating the issue. This has an economic impact. It is an obvious quality of life impact. Um, it has taken, uh, years of citizen advocacy and, uh, and advocacy, advocacy from, from, uh, our office, uh, and our state delegation, delegates, uh, Metzger, Grammar, and, and Long, and Senator Salling have, have all been working on the state level. It's a state waterway, but it's county residents that are being, uh, affected by this. Uh, so it's involved some in, uh, multi-jurisdictional and inter-agency cooperation that, uh, Director Lichten and, and County Executive Asheski, um, have, have helped, uh, facilitate that we've gotten to the point, uh, along with this is citizen advocacy to, uh, to get to this point where, where we can see some action taken. And we can see, uh, through, uh, this resolution, uh, the efficacy of treating the midges uh, through the mechanism that Director Lichten had, um, uh, uh, had, had described. And, um, um, I, I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't, um, uh, just, just recognize a, a couple of our ci- citizen advocates. Uh, one of them, um, uh, well, two of them actually, Sam Weaver and Karen Nguyen, who I believe are going to, uh, uh, speak to us here in a minute. Um, they've given their own time and treasure to, uh, working with the county biologist that, uh, Director Lichten has been able to supply to, uh, to the effort to, uh, study the, the populations of the, the, um, uh, the, the, the midges, how they, uh, evolve, how they become, how they come out of the mud into the water and then into the air and infest our areas. Um, so this is a, the, the, this resolution, although seemingly small in terms of the fact that it's a free donation from, uh, from two different companies, which is certainly appreciated. Um, this, although it's a first step in treating the problem, this is the culmination of a lot of effort from a lot of people that have put a lot of time, um, into trying to combat this. Um, and if the, the, and, and I know we have speakers, but if, if the chair will indulge me, there's one speaker that could not join us tonight. And I'd write, I'd like to read his, uh, letter to the council. Um, if that's okay with, uh, with, with the chair.
Yeah, that, that's fine. So let, let me get a picture. So I, I think you don't like the midge. Yeah, Councilman Crandall.
Well, there's cer- there are certain species of fish that like the midges, but, um, I'm not particularly fond of them, no.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wrapped up the testimony, you know, make sure I understood it all. Uh, if you don't mind, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Rogers, you can go ahead and then, Councilman Crandall, then you can read the, uh, testimony. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Councilmember Crandall, good evening, uh, Councilmember, Mr. Chair. Thank you for a moment to speak on behalf of this effort because Councilmember Crandall is so on point with, we've seen pictures of the midge infestations where it just looks like a, a black sheet coming down people's doors. I mean, it's incredible. But I just wanted you to also know that we're working very, very closely with the state, um, Department of Agriculture. This is just one of a number of steps that we'll be taking, uh, over the, the winter and into the early spring to try to get ahead of the, the, the next brood of, of the midges. And, and I'll say here, Baltimore County, we have one of the experts on midges, um, um, uh, Director Lichten, staff person, Dr. Kevin, he has a PhD in, in, in midge. Uh, vice president over. This is, I'm, I'm serious.
Oh, midge allergy?
I mean, he just, this, he's incredible. He, he just lives and breathes this. So we're lucky to have him. But we're also working with the city. I want you to know, we're talking with the city about a joint effort, you know, to, to deal with the entire lifecycle of the midges from, you know, Back River neck at the source and then all the way down to the treatment plant. So, uh, at, at headwork. So we are definitely, you know, aggressively trying to, uh, do new things because they have just become an incredible nuisance. And we're trying really hard here in Baltimore County to do some additional interventions to try to reduce that number of sightings each year. That will be our measure. Then we'll see a reduced incidence of, um, community sightings.
And, and, uh, Ms. Rogers, I, I, I fully appreciate your, your, your comments and, and, uh, your support and the county executive's support of this issue. As, uh, Director Lichten's mentioned, um, Governor Hogan years ago, um, uh, made an offer to the county and, uh, the previous administration declined the offer to, to communicate. And, uh, I was very happy to sign a, 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 co-sign a letter with the county executive that went to, uh, the, the Department of Agriculture, uh, and to Secretary Barton Felder, uh, pledging the county's, uh, uh, commitment to partner with the state uh, on this issue. And as you mentioned, this is, um, the, this is a complex issue. There, there's not one singular source of, um, uh, of, of the problem. It's nutrients flowing from the wastewater treatment plant. It's, it's, it's runoff providing nutrients that the midges love. Um, there are several different, um, complicating factors. It, it's, it's not as simple as, um, let's just spray for the mosquitoes and then mosquitoes will, will be gone. It's, it's more complicated than that. And, um, this has really been just a, uh, and, and all, all, you know, all hands on deck sort of, um, issue. And, um, I'm appreciative of the fact that, um, uh, that, that we have advocates within the administration that recognize the seriousness of this. And that is, it is really causing, uh, a quality of life and a financial impact, uh, on, on Baltimore County residents. So, um, with that, if I can just read one testimony from someone that couldn't make it today. And then I know we have a couple of speakers on the issue and, uh,
All righty.
If you indulge me on that. Um, so this is to the, the Baltimore County Council members. My name is Robert Zachroll. I'm the president of the Wells McComas Community, uh, Citizens Improvement Association. We were founded in nineteen fifty-six. Our community is in southeastern Baltimore County and consists of the area between Back River to the north and North Point Boulevard to the south, from East Point Mall East to Wise Avenue, uh, Wise Avenue Extended. Um, we are a waterfront community with over eighty percent of our nearly five hundred homes being within five hundred feet of Back River and/or its tidal marshes. Uh, midges have been an issue for our residents for years, especially the folks that live on Back River who are inundated with them in late spring into early summer every year. They can't keep their lights on, uh, near their doors, uh, because the midges cling to their siding, uh, the siding and shrubbery around their homes. They must choose whether they should keep security lighting on their piers because their boats will be covered with midges every morning that have to be washed off daily. Uh, one of our neighbors painted his new house in May, and we had to vacuum his walls and ceiling every time we painted because the midges gathered all over his home due to the midges being attracted to the streetlight in front of his home. I could go on for hours about the quality of life issues that midges bring to our neighborhood. This past season was by far the worst in the forty-four years I've lived in this community. It used to be a nuisance for the folks that live primarily on the river. This past year, it has worsened to the point where folks avoided going to the Wawa and Royal Farm gas stations on North Point Boulevard at night due to the lighting attracting the midges and they're swarming around the gas pumps. I received calls from folks that had never seen or heard of them, asking why these mosquitoes were everywhere. We implore the county to take this issue seriously and do whatever is necessary to provide our community and joining neighbors up and down Back River, on both sides of the river, who have been nothing short of invaded by these nuisance midges. Please pass the resolution to accept the proposed donation of time and materials to test the effectiveness of the larvicide applied by helicopter along a sixty-acre, um, Director Lichten, and I can argue about the acreage on that, but along a sixty-acre, uh, 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 area along Back River, this could be a great first step in controlling these insects that truly affect our quality of life. Sincerely, Robert Zachroll and the members of the Wells McComas Citizens Improvement Association. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me and letting me read that testimony. And, um, I guess we want to hear from our, our speakers now, but it's, it's your floor, Mr. Chair.
M- Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Pitt?
Yes, uh, Councilman Crandall or Ms. Rogers, uh, do midges spread disease?
No.
No, okay. I can remember in Scotland, we were there in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, in the afternoon, they would come out in droves and they are miserable. There's no question about it. Are, are the one, do they come out at a certain time or are they present all the time?
I will have to defer to Mr. Lichten and Dr. Kevin. He is the expert on midges. But we do know that there is a life cycle. And clearly in the warmer months is, and in the spring is when the broods begin to hatch and just become, you know, in incredible, there's a large amounts of them. But we do, like I said, have a, a midge expert on staff that has been working diligently to try to determine what strategies do we need to take to really get out ahead of them? And this, the, this, um, pilot on spraying is one of the new ways that we're trying.
And, and, and to add on to that, Ms. Rogers, um, uh, Dr. Cam Brittingham is the gentleman that you refer to.
Dr. Kevin, yes.
Who has been working on this, um, uh, and, and working with our citizens hand in hand and being out on boats with, with citizen volunteers and, um, uh, pulling, pulling, pulling sediment samples and water samples. Um, uh, he, he, he's been amazing. But, um, and, and I'll defer to the, 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 the scientists behind this, um, especially Dr. Brittingham. And then I think some of the people that are going to testify, um, who've been around this issue for, for so long. Um, they'll tell you that, um, the, the, the midges swarm.
Yep.
And, um, they are affected by wind, uh, temperature, uh, salinity of the water. So that the Back River watershed is a tidal watershed. So, um, they, they, the, um, so, so tides affect their, uh, their, their breeding habits. Uh, uh, salinity certainly affects their breeding habits. Um, and, uh, nutrients, uh, that enter the watershed certainly affect their breeding habits as well. So you'll, you'll have one clear day where they won't be around. Um, and then the next day, the whole neighborhood will just be entirely inundated with them. And, um, if the council, I didn't, I didn't want to put on a PowerPoint show or anything today. But, um, if the members are interested, I have, um, scientific data that I can share with you, uh, photographic data that I can share with you. Um, um, and, um, uh, and I know that the, the constituents that have been advocates, uh, for this issue, they have more than, than we could probably ever read by Monday night when we vote on this, um, to show you, um, uh, the, 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 uh, sort of the, the, the scope of the, of the problem that we're trying to deal with.
Councilman Koch?
Yes.
To answer your original question, this is Dave Lichten. Um, they have a two-week life cycle. So you see the adults above the, think of them as a cicada almost. They, you see the adults, they don't eat, they just breed and they die. The larval form is what we're going after. They live down the sediments. So every two weeks, they come back up and they can emerge again and have a new generation. But this bacteria goes down into the sediments where the larval forms live, and it kills them down there. So that's what we're trying to get to.
Is, is it, uh, is the infestation spreading?
We think it's getting, it is getting larger and larger. It's a world, midges are a worldwide problem. They're, they're everywhere. But, um, in fact, it's rumored that, uh, Disney World is the number one place, uh, where this, this larvicide BTI is used, the majority of it, they, they, because they have such a problem down there. But really, it's, it's a problem everywhere. Um, but we have a, we, we put a midge app up on our website so people could report infestations, um, to see how many we have. And we got about twice as many this- um, to see how many we have. And we got about twice as many this year as we did last year.
I mean, I can see where an infestation of midges would certainly be damaging to restaurants and other retail establishments. So uh, I'm happy to hear that we are on the warpath against them. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Uh, you know, uh, you say we're going to be spraying some bacteria that from buildings. I'm I'm assuming that you know, I know this crazy talk. I know this is safe of the wildlife.
Yes, it's a naturally occurring bacteria that is perfectly safe.
Okay. All right. Um, there's no more questions or comments. Let's get to the speakers and stuff, Pastor.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our first speaker is Karen Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
Okay. Well, a lot of what I had written down has been said, but I, uh, some of it I'll reiterate. Um, first of all, my name's Karen Nguyen. I'm the co-founder of Maryland Waterways Foundation, a board member of many other organizations that are water-based and environmental-based, including the CEQ. Um, and I'm personally affected by midges as I live in my boats in on Back River in southeast Baltimore County. Um, I also have a house in Lutherville, so I think both areas are beautiful, but there's no denying the beauty of the waterfront of Baltimore County. Um, I personally have been working on this problem, researching it, and I know more about midges than I ever wanted to. I've been researching it for the last nearly decade. Um, been working with violent biosciences, with DNR, with um, Depp's, um, Dr. Brittingham. Um, it's been a great partnership with with all of the groups. Um, so I I expect that to continue. Um, I obviously am in favor of signing of passing Resolution one thirty-four dash twenty-one. Um, I want to thank Councilman Crandall, David Lycan's, Dr. Brittingham for their perseverance and introducing this rev- uh, resolution today. Um, I was just going to give a little brief background on the midges. Again, to reiterate, they are born in the mud or the sediment of the waterway. And they're just a little red worm when they're born, the larvae, about a half inch long. Um, it was mentioned, um, okay, they go through various stages and timeframes based on the water temperature and the air temperature before they reach the surface of the water. Um, once they reach the surface, they become airborne. It was, there was a reference to cicadas. We didn't have as many cicadas in this area, but the problem was so bad with the midges this year, the swarming, the noise was as louder louder than in areas with the cicadas. Um, it's hard to believe, but that was, that's how it was. Um, at the point they reach where they're they're swarming, they're airborne, they start to swarm. Uh, Chair Councilman Jones, I do not like midges. I don't like when they fly in my mouth, my ears, my nose. It's disgusting. You gag all the wonderful things I could say. Um, but while they're swarming around, they leave messes everywhere. And it seems most people will say, well, if it's not a health condition, they don't spread disease, but they do. They, we know personally that they do affect people with asthma. Um, people have allergic reactions to them, their faces swell and different issues like that. So it does, it does have somewhat of a health concern, not in the way that mosquitoes can spread airborne diseases. Um, but as they, as in their short lifespan, they can lay up to a thousand eggs. Um, and while they are in their their flying stage, mosquitoes, they could be sprayed and it kills the adults, but this this, what we're using the BTI will kill them in the larvae stage and break the cycle of the of the midges. We, uh, we're not trying to wipe out the species of midges, just bring them to a controllable level. Um, nuisance level is considered five hundred per meter squared. And in many cases, we have, we we quadruple that amount in the samples. Um, Dr. Brittingham was out today and doing samples and was finding much larger than levels than the the nuisance level. Uh, so it's, it really is an outstanding problem. Um, they have spread. When we started this, they were in a more confined area and they've spread throughout both sides of of Back River and to Middle River, in fact. So it's something that does drastically need to be addressed. So.
If you could wrap up your comments.
Okay, just real quick, one of my things. Um, again, the BTI, it's a naturally occurring larvicide. It's, do not be mistaken, it's not a chemical. And it's non-toxic to humans, mammals, birds, fish, plants, and beneficial insects. And we have used it before. We were part of the the testing and it's been used worldwide. But we were part of it on Back River. Just the use of the helicopter will make it much more efficient and effective. Where people can, businesses can go on and communities, people can go back on with their life and use their outdoor space again. So we just hope that the county continues with their perseverance with this. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I uh, I have to make a confession. While we've been going through this, having this conversation, I've been googling the midges and looking at the life cycle and how they live. What they've been doing, pictures, swarms. It's been, uh, pretty gross just looking at it. Uh, next speaker, Mr. Pastor.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Sam Weaver.
Hi, can you hear me?
Mr. Weaver?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Sam Weaver from Weaver's Marine Service. We've been here since nineteen forty-five. I've spent my whole life on this river. Uh, two thousand three, Isabel hit, wiped us out. Two thousand five, we spent a million and a half dollars to put new docks in Back River. Everything was great. We were full. We put floating docks in. Two thousand nine, the midges appeared. Everything's been downhill since then. We are, uh, when we started with the new docks, it was to create a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar income a year to pay back the money that we borrowed. And since two thousand nine, we've been less than half full. Um, we're down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue per year. We don't get any bottom paint. We don't sell gas. We don't get repairs. We don't do anything because those people aren't here and most of them move to the eastern shore. I have folders full of letters that'll back that up. So all the revenue that was coming to Baltimore County is going to other counties. And um, the businesses around here, we've touched on this before, the farm stores, bars. I mean, we've had some friends with bars that had to close. It was so bad. So um, again, just to wrap up that, we really, really appreciate everything the county's doing to get this problem under control. It's been devastating since we've been here in the last twelve years. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Sam. And let me guess, take a a moment to thank you and Karen and for your advocacy and all the great work you do keeping our waterways and streams clean throughout Baltimore County. You're a truly, uh, dedicated public servant and we 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 really, really appreciate all your effort.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I, uh, this, Devin, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was looking at midges myself.
Okay, uh, any additional questions or comments? Do we have another speaker in this podcast?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just one more speaker. This is our last speaker for uh, this evening's, uh, or this afternoon's session. Yeah, it is Jason Baumgartner. Mr. Baumgartner?
Uh, that's pronounced correctly. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, for the time here. I appreciate it. Uh, again, I'm Jason Baumgartner. I'm the vice president of Marine Trade Association of Baltimore County. Uh, I'm also in the board of directors here at Riverside Marine, uh, third generation family owner operated just like Sam Weaver's down the street here. Um, and we developed a strong business here right on Back River. Riverside Marine is the largest volume boat dealer in the state, right here in Baltimore County. And we export some boats, one of the brands that we sell, largest boat dealership in the country. Um, some of the boats that we sell retail for over half million dollars. And uh, our clientele have been, to put it lightly, uh, chocked about the mid situation. And this type of clientele does not take a nuisance like this lightly. Uh, it means a lot to them, you know, half million dollar boat, covered in midges. Uh, it it's disgusting. Um, we clean the boats, uh, the day before delivery and the midges will literally destroy them overnight. Um, we lose service customers because of the condition. Um, the boats returned, I mean, they just don't come back, you know? Uh, this hit us extra hard, um, because we decided to change our footprint right around the time the midges got bad here in two thousand nine. We had four locations throughout Maryland. And we chose our marina we've owned since seventy-six to do all our business out of. We spent multiple million dollars, um, on buying property next to us, up upgrading our our facilities. Um, and currently we have permits in right now, um, for the last phase of our project, which is putting a new pier in. Um, just like Sammy, it's going to be over a million dollars. And to be frank, we are very torn on if we want to invest that kind of money in our facility because we're not going to get a return on investment. Um, it it's extremely difficult to keep a marina full when our customers are being completely swarmed by midges. Um, and on the marine trade side, uh, just like Sammy said, I see a lot of marinas up and down Back River, um, complain, uh, about the same issues we're having. Uh, Sammy there, you know, down the re- down the river is, uh, west shore, uh, and then of course, you you got a Piggy Lee's Dock Bar, they get ravaged by it as well. So it's it's not just a centralized issue anymore. It's it's all up and down the river. Um, so a- anyway, the the local government can help us out. We would be extremely appreciative of it. Um, and also the note, I lived over by Morse Lane, uh, about a half mile off of the off of the river and and they will move all the way off the river. Um, and and the one thing that really wasn't stated, um, because I know uh, Councilman Crandall did a great job explaining the midges is when they die, they leave a green like dot behind and everything that they they touch. And literally you have to scrub it off or hose it off and and uh, it'll stain, permanently stain stuff. If it's not properly waxed like a boat or siding, it'll stain the siding. You can't get it off. I mean, it it's 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 more than nuisance. We spend thousands of dollars a year to try and maintain our property, um, a- around these midges. It's insane. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason, for your testimony. Uh, we certainly wish you well and we're going to do our best and we thank you so much for, uh, investing in Baltimore County and employing people and paying a wage and you name it. Paying taxes, of course. Uh, we realize we had other locations, yet we chose to, uh, you know, invest here and and double down, but we appreciate it. Uh, any additional questions or comments? Thank you so much. Learned an awful lot about midges today. I know I did. Uh, next, I guess we move on to page sixty-two. Not sure you can, uh, do much with this, but page sixty-two is, uh, Councilman Marx, Jones, Potoka.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that.
Sure.
So, uh, this is a resolution that will ask the Baltimore County Advisory Commission on Environmental Quality to, um, look into, uh, basically the life cycles of, um, trees that are planted in development. Um, I'm introducing this after, uh, Baltimore County Neighbor Space uh, gave a a very, um, enlightening tour to Councilman Potoka and myself, uh, where we saw tree stands that had been planted. Um, and, uh, the reforestation projects were not adequately surviving after after ten years. Um, so we're gonna, I'd like to ask the Baltimore County Advisory Commission on Environmental Quality to look at this uh, to, um, see if maybe the law should be revised to consult with stakeholder groups. The resolution specifically says that the home builders industry is part of this process and to give us a report back on, um, whether the law needs to be modified.
Thank you, Councilman Marx. I know for me, uh, you know, I signed on because one of the things I'm very interested in is when we have requirements for people to plant, uh, buffers, for example, I'll just use a solar pond. And a couple of years later, that all that buffer is, you know, not flourishing like we would like or or dead, to say the least. Uh, so that's been a concern of folks in my community. So any additional questions or comments?
Yeah.
Chair. Go ahead, uh, Councilman, uh, Potoka.
Yeah, so, uh, as Councilman Marx mentioned, uh, he and I went on a tour with Neighbor Space and we saw areas that were, uh, replanted or reforested that worked and those that didn't work. And and it, uh, really, uh, the turning factor was the level of maintenance and the species that are appropriate for the soil and the area. And so it's almost not worth replanting if the forest isn't going to make it, if the reforestation is not going to make it. So it was really eye-opening for me. That's why I'm I'm happy to sponsor, uh, uh, cosponsor this bill. Uh, I appreciate you and and Councilman Marx cosponsoring as well. I spoke with Lois Jacobs, who is my rep on the CEQ. She is gonna, uh, she is gonna, uh, champion it at least, uh, uh, part of it. I also spoke with, uh, Rabbi Nina Beth Carden. She's been an environmental champion for a long time and we talked at length about reforestation and what works and what doesn't. And she brought it back to a real simple term and that, a real simple way to understand it. And she says you can replant or you can regrow. And what we should strive for is not just replanting, but regrowing. And so I'll close with those wide word, wise words from Rabbi Nina Beth Carden.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
I'd like to cosponsor the bill. I've seen many examples of replantings that have not made it. And I can remember Mr. Lycan's predecessor talking about this issue when I was first elected to the council. So I'm enthusiastically supporting this legislation.
Okay, Councilman Port?
Same, same. I think it's a a good idea for sure and, um, happy to to see this, uh, focused on more. It does make sense. And I do like to, on a different note, the tree canopy and, you know, the work the county's doing. Um, you know, planting trees and then making sure those trees survive too. So I like the efforts. It's a good idea. So I'm definitely signing on as well. Good, good.
Thank you, Councilman Port. Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you all.
All right, let's move on to the last item today. Page twenty. Councilman Catch?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this bill deals with, uh, Weber's Farm, which is in Carney. Right now, uh, they're very famous for apple cider. And one of the issues that they've had, which I'm sure is very frustrating to them, uh, they have many apples who fall off the tree and they rot on the ground. Well, there's nothing they can do with those rotten apples because they cannot use them to make hard cider. So what they'd like to do is be able to produce hard cider, uh, sell it and serve it there. And, uh, so in order to do that, you have to have a wine license. And so this legislation, uh, would, uh, grant the wine license so that Weber's can, uh, produce hard cider. Uh, so that's it, Mr. Chair. And it was, uh, our office of, uh, ec- is it Economic Development? I know they've changed the name of it, but, uh, ha- has, uh, worked with Weber's to, uh, bring this about. And we've contacted the neighboring communities to make sure that, uh, you know, they support it and that the extra traffic that might be generated, uh, uh, is not an issue for them. So I appreciate uh, the council's favorable uh, vote on this bill.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Councilman uh, Marks?
Yeah, one, one of my earliest memories is uh, going to Weber's Farm when I was about five or six. Uh, Councilman Cash is correct, it is an absolute gem in northeastern Baltimore County. Um, I commend him for reaching out to the community and I am uh, happy to cosponsor this bill.
Thank you. And Cash. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, everyone take care, have a great night, be safe. Uh, we'll see you soon and watch out for the midges.
Good night, everybody.